It is 7 o'clock on Thursday, June 25th. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals tonight. Thank you for everyone who is joining us by Zoom. And first off, we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Akari, can you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, and just as all.
Thank you very much. Okay, I do not have any announcements today. Next on the agenda is meeting minutes. So we have two sets of meeting minutes for tonight, May 28th as well as June 4th. So are there any comments or questions to either of those sets of meeting minutes? Or any modifications of any sort?
The only thing that I noticed where I abstained from voting, it's sustained instead of abstained.
Thank you.
Time to take a break.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. If no other modifications with that one slight modification made to the meeting minutes, and that was for the May 28th meeting, is that correct? Jerry?
I abstained from the February meeting, I believe, because I'm a resident.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
In May, but it was from February, right?
Exactly. Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 28th and June 4th?
Sorry, can't.
Mr. Akari?
Yes?
Mr. Quellen?
Yes?
Mr. Manning?
Yes?
Mr. Spazza?
Yes?
Chairwoman, does it? Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the public comment section. If you have any comments and you'd like to voice any comment of any sort, please raise your hand. Just as a side, if you have any comments for the public hearings for both the Country Club Drive or the Oakwood Courts, just hold off on that. We'll have a time during those to be heard for any questions or comments that you may have in regards to both of those. So the public comments section is now open for anyone who would like to speak. Okay, so we have one here. All right. Mr. Tui. I think he has something he'd like to say to us. Hold on just a second here.
Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Okay, I cannot get into the screen.
Okay, as far as sharing, Mr. Tui? Or what are you looking to do?
We're trying to do this so that you can see me and I can... It does not seem to be working yet after I did.
I'm not sure why you can't see us.
I've hit both. You guys aren't talking. Uh, you hear?
Okay. I'm not sure why you can't see us. You should be able to see us. You could try to log off and log back in. That may solve the problem. I know sometimes things get a little funky with audio and video and that sort of thing. So when it asks you, video, just accept that. So try doing that and see if that resolves the issue there. Okay, let's see. Any other comments for the public comment section? Okay, I'm not seeing any. I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we're going to close out the public comment section. Next on the agenda, we have, it's exactly 7:05 currently. So we have the public hearing for Country Club Drive, James R. O'Brien. And it's the area variance for that. It's 215 point dash 1 dash 27 and 215 point dash 1 dash 28. And it's various relief, so we'll go over those to combine the two parcels for a single family residential use, okay? So I'd like to open the public hearing for that. And first, I'd like to give Mr. Tui an opportunity to speak in regards to that. And just tell us exactly what relief you're seeking, so if you can just be as specific as you can. I don't know if he's, yes, he has joined us back, so let's see. Okay. All right, Mr. Tui, you are currently unmuted. If you'd like to just give us a quick little synopsis again of exactly what relief you're seeking for this property, for this area variance, that would be great.
Okay, exactly. As you're doing, as we explained over the last month, this is a combination of two lots on Country Club Drive. Country Club Drive is a small, seedy, narrow part of the town.
Can you hear him?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, we can hear you.
Where do you? Um, the presentation has to do with a combination of tax parcels, 215 dash 1 dash 28, 215 dash 1 dash 27. There is a listing of area variances that we need that are caused by the fact that this subdivision created lots that were massively substandard with regard to this district within the town of Milton. What we are attempting to do is to build as large a lot as exists on the street. Hello?
Mr. Tui?
Yes?
You cut out for a minute there. I'm sorry.
Okay, this is becoming harder and harder because I don't know what you're hearing. The, this is the combination of two lots on Country Club Drive. You would make the largest lot on that street as displayed in the bracket that we supplied to the town. We need to have derision because of the size of the lot that was permitted, and that is included in my application.
Mr. Tui, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do you have a phone and a laptop going at once?
Yes.
Okay, you can only have one device going at once, otherwise you're going to get the feedback that we're hearing. Are you not able to? Okay, so you're muted now.
And can you unmute him for a second?
Yeah. I can ask him to unmute, but...
Yeah.
I'm here. I'm here. I'm here.
Mic is built.
It's built.
Can you use your computer audio?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Perfect.
That's better.
Yes.
Did you turn off your phone?
I've thrown the phone out the window.
Good job.
You're perfect. You're good. We can all hear you now.
Most people don't refer to me as perfect, so that's... The, again, what we are attempting to do is combine two lots. I've said that several times and you understand it. These are two existing tax parcels that were part of the original 1966 subdivision that was authorized by the town. By this combination, we would have the largest single family lot on Casino Drive, significantly larger than the majority of them, and I've given you a chart showing those averages. With that, we still need variances because the lot is just too small even when combined for the zone in which it exists. As a result, and the other part of this is, one of the lots, Parcel 28, has a deed restriction in it that requires that the house be located 85 feet from the grove. As a result, we're seeking a setback on the front yard for 85 feet. The lot is wide enough in combination, but it is not large enough with regard to the size of the lot. But there's no possible configuration that we could have that would make it that large. So we've taken setbacks from both 67 and from Country Club Drive. The county planning board in its opinion had the idea, and we agree with this, that roadway for the driveway for the house would not come off of Route 67. It would have to come off of Country Club Drive. It makes a lot of sense for safety and every other purpose. So again, the relief that we asked for last month is exactly the relief that we've come forward with today.
Okay. I'd like to just be specific when we're talking about this because we have several different reliefs that you're looking for. So I'd like to just kind of spell them out so we're all kind of on the same page and the board understands what that is that you're seeking. So for the lot width, the permitted is 200 feet. You're proposing 135 point 73, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Front setback permitted is 150. You are seeking 85 feet.
That is correct.
Okay. Side setback is permitted 50. You are staying up to 50, is that also correct?
On both sides of the building window, there are 50 feet in space.
Okay, good. Rear setback, the permitted is 75. You're seeking 35 feet.
I believe you're seeking 40 feet of relief.
Yes.
That's right. Okay.
But you're taking it to 35?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. For the area, the density, five acres, the proposed is .92 acres.
That is correct. One of the points that you made originally for the frontage at 135.73, and is on the Route 67 side.
Correct.
Casino, Country Club Drive side, we have more than 200 feet, specifically 237, 232.74 feet.
Okay, I will make a note of that, so that's specific.
Yes.
Okay. At this point, does anyone from the public would like to make a comment? This would be the time to do so. And if you would just raise your hand with the little hand button, I will allow you to speak and I'll give you the time to do so, so certainly do that. I think it looks like we got one already. Let's see here. Jay Slu.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi, my name is Lily Byers and I'm here with my husband, J.C. Byers, and we live on Country Club Drive. And we are very concerned about this combination leading to building of a home on a property where you're on a small street with lots of wells, one of which is already dried up and they've had to find another well in your property. And I've submitted comments and questions for all of you ahead of time. I hope you have them. One of them being, combining the two lots to one in order to build a house, how can you protect your townspeople and their drinking water? Who is culpable when we no longer have water and when our water is now poisoned or undrinkable? The school and the golf course are right next to Orange Road. If you do allow this building, which I hope you do not, are we going to be able to get town water? You so far have not supplied that for our area, and I've been told that you have sent no to previous requests. Or notice that two properties in front of the lot have wells in their front yard, and yet the neighboring lot has a well in their backyard. Where is the subject tank going to go? Where is the leach field going to go? And how are you going to protect the wells? We have a very small neighborhood of five homes. The homes are on the smaller side, and they're very modest ranch styles. What type of house are you going to allow to be built here? Is it going to be another McMansion? Are you going to just keep allowing development throughout our town and just ruining the land that we have? And we are a right-to-farm community. There are several people here, including ourselves, that have guarded all summer long to provide food for our families. What are you going to do to protect us from that and from this building happening? How do you protect our water? Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Again, it is public comment or public hearing, so certainly we will take those into consideration as we hear the different comments and look through the application and make a decision on that. Thank you so much.
Right. Comment on that?
You can, Mr. Tui, because it is a public comment. You don't need to, but you certainly are able to if you wish to.
One of the things is that under this subdivision, we would have the right to build two homes on this property. The town has created this subdivision and has allowed that to happen. What we are doing here is not increasing the problem. We are minimizing the problem by having a larger lot, .92 acres, and a single family home on the property. The alternate that is being suggested is that the owner of this property has no usable right to construct a home on the land, and that's not appropriate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tui. Okay, it looks like we have a couple more raised hands here. Let's see. Mr. Kane, I'm going to allow you to speak here. Okay, Mr. Kane, go ahead. The floor is yours. Mr. Kane, are you able to speak? You are unmuted, I do see that. If you have a question, there is also at the bottom, because we're not able to hear you, a question and answer. You can certainly go there and type in your question or your comment if you have one. Okay, I'm going to move on, but certainly I can go back to you. All right, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised. Tina, is that correct? Okay. Oh, okay, I did get a comment or a question. Okay, yes, here we go.
Hi again, it's Lily Byers on E-Test 11. In regards to what Mr. Tui said, what he stated seemed like it was either we get the one house or it has been chosen that we get the two houses. I'm under the impression that if, you know, it is two lots, that within the two lots were not available to put a well on a subject within the 100-foot range. You know, even, I'd like to know if that's what he's actually saying. And with that being said, he didn't answer the question is, how is he going to protect our wells within the 100-foot range? And what happens when our wells dry out, as some have already done? And is he going to be held liable for it? Because he's well aware now of what's going on. So I'd like to just know if there's going, if someone has put in a bid for the two houses and if he's just using it as a ploy or if, you know, it's an actual fact. Thank you.
I can address that to some extent again. It is a comment section, not a question and answer. So certainly we'll consider the questions that you have. The property is residential property, so I mean, that is zoned that way. So that is obviously a consideration there. But again, you know, appreciate the comments that you have. All right, I'm going to try Mr. Kane again. Hopefully this time it might work. Let's allow him to speak and certainly if it doesn't, we'll have to move on at this point. Mr. Kane, are you able to speak? Okay, looks like he is not. All right. Okay, so at this point, we're going to close out the public hearing. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah. Sure.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. I have a question.
Sure.
Actually, Bill, in light of the fact that somebody was trying to make a comment and our technology isn't allowing them to, should we allow some sort of a grace period on something like this or, you know, just to make sure that people are heard?
I would consider, I think it's a good question, and I would consider offering Mr. Kane, if Mr. Lewis is willing, Mr. Lewis's cell phone number. If we could manage Mr. Kane's question in that manner. Otherwise, the other acceptable alternative is to indicate that the Q and A section, which sometimes serves as a chat function, can also be utilized in order to receive a question. But I think the most expedient would be to allow Mr. Kane to have access to Mr. Lewis's phone or well aboard the board box. And I agree, I think an effort should be made to allow him.
Yeah, good point. Bill, are you, Mr. Lewis, are you okay with offering up your cell phone for Mr. Kane to call you with a comment? I see Tina walking over.
Yes. Your cell phone number, Gary Book, 518-376-1831.
Okay. Bill, Kenery, do you propose that we just kind of hold it for a couple minutes, open to give him a chance to kind of call in?
Yes.
Okay.
And if it is the chair's pleasure, you can either discuss the application at this point or adjourn the public hearing at this point. And I know that's a little bit cumbersome, adjourned it and then returning back, but to allow Mr. Kane the opportunity, I think that would be fair.
Okay, okay. All right, so why don't we, yeah, let's discuss the application. We'll give him a couple minutes to kind of call in. Certainly poke me if, you know, if he doesn't call in and we haven't closed out the public hearing, certainly do that. Okay. So looking at the application, folks, on the board, let's deliberate and discuss some of the merits of that. And again, referring back specifically to the area variance language. So making sure that you're kind of referencing specific things from the area variance language would be helpful as we, you know, try to fit the pieces together and come to a resolution. So I'd like to hear your input on that, please.
I have one other question for Bill. Okay, ask.
Yes, please.
In looking at this case, I was just mentioning it to one of your brethren, just in general, and he stated something that if someone has property, they have a right to use it and we have no right to say, "No, you can't." Does that make any sense? I mean, is there some kind of something that I don't understand?
You mean if it's still residential?
No, just in general. In other words, if someone owns property, I realize, you know, we can say you can build a house or you can build a factory, but that they have to have some use for it and that we can't deny that? Does that make sense?
Well, I think there are a number of parts if I try to tie it to this application. You know, the applicant has indicated, and I think currently so, because we've learned a little bit of the history since the application was filed, that there are two previously subdivided lots that exist in this realty subdivision. Now, the issue becomes one of what do folks typically do in terms of the use of that property in the zone? And as you and I appreciate, certainly you could probably grow some vegetables and do some other things, but you've also had some confines with respect to what zoning allows you to do as it relates to the use. I don't know this for a fact, but I think we can infer that one of the issues here is that this applicant has in all likelihood identified that, and as we've heard about, the two pre-existing non-conforming lots probably present some building envelope configuration problems. And so with that said, and I infer this, that the applicant made a determination that it seemed to make sense for purposes of their property. the applicant made a determination that it seemed to make sense for purposes of their project, their use, if you will, their, their intended use. Um, and, and I mean that in the sense of what is their intended use here? A single-family residence. Um, I'm assuming that their project is a combination of the two lots where they will, without any board approval, merge the titles to these two lots to make it one. And my assumption is, and it's an assumption on my part, that they have probably done some work to determine the feasibility of configuring a single-family, um, residence on the lot. But to your point, um, it is in fact a case that real property can be the subject of, for instance, a subdivision approval. Um, and it can be an outcome where the underlying parcel is divided, and it doesn't result in houses being on them. And of course, as you know, with respect to this board, um, this board is not passing on that at this point in time. Uh, that's an issue for the Code Enforcement Office, the Perpetual Paying Office. Now, with all of that said, um, the last piece of it in terms of your thought process is, it's certainly reasonable for you to ask the applicant, what is it that you intend to do on this property if the relief is granted? And I think that the applicant has, uh, answered those questions to, to my way of thinking, and that may not, uh, you know, meet with the thinking of other board members. Uh, but the use of it is at this point in time subject to zoning.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
We have a hand raised?
I have her. Hello, this is Lily Byers again on the 8 Country Club Drive. I have my neighbor Bob Kane here with me, and, uh, he was the one that was trying to print, so I was, one second, here's Bob.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Hi, um, I'm a little confused on a couple comments somebody made, and they kept referring to Casino Drive. What's that?
A mistake.
Yeah, that was a, uh, a mistake.
Okay, well, it kept cutting down, so I really don't understand what he's talking about. But somebody said that you can't build on, um, on the lot. I don't understand why he cre- I mean, it just strikes me as it might be an alternative motive, because you can't build on the lot. But the lot that I have on all these lots are the exact same size as where my house is built on my lot. So why, why can't they build on that lot? What's the problem?
Hello, Steve, do you wanna, do you wanna, um, quickly address that? I think that would be a good education point for, for everyone.
Unmute yourself.
I unmuted, right?
Yes, hang on.
Uh, sir, it's, uh, two pre-existing non-conforming lots. Uh, we changed our zoning after the subdivision was, uh, put into play in 1966 for five-acre lots. And the applicant is trying to merge the two lots to make a larger lot to try to conform to our zoning, in which he's submitted the application for relief to the zoning board. Um, with the existing lots that you have right now, the ones that you have, they're pre-existing non-conforming use, they're a lot. Um, meaning that the well-septic separations on them, and with a house envelope, you, it's very hard to get the 100-foot leach field to well separation, 50-foot from tank to well separation, and meet current, uh, Health Department codes. The applicant is trying to merge the two lots to try to get a, a larger lot, which in our R1 district, we allow, uh, one-acre minimum lots to get well septic on. As said, you are in the R2, it is a five-acre lot, so he is asking for quite a bit of area relief of the lot. But with doing so, he is trying to conform to all the regulations that's fitted along with it to that, to that lot.
Now, does that mean that he has to, if I have a lot on lot, on lot number three, which is right next to lot number two, um, which is gonna be missed, um, that means he can't put a, uh, septic within 100 feet of my well on lot, I have a, I have a well on lot three?
Yeah, and the septic, the septic tank can be up to 50 feet from that, but the, the leach field where all the groundwater leaches into the ground has to be a minimum of 100 foot, and he has to show that. An engineer has designed a system to go on the lot, uh, in order for him to construct, put a house and put a septic system on. He has to have a New York State Design Professional design a septic system that will fit that.
And how far, and how far can, is there, is there some rule about, um, building a, uh, a well on lot two? Or does he, does that make?
He can, he has the right, if he owns the property, he has a right to construct a well. It's just a, a permitted use. He has to submit a DEC report, and obviously before he uses it, he has to get a water quality test. But he, as a, the owner of the property, he has the right to, uh, drill a well.
Okay. So, because I have a well on lot three that's close to lot two.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Kane, for, for your comments. We appreciate it. Okay, um, since I have a motion to, uh, close the public hearing by pet, I, I still need a second for that. Can I get a second to, um, to close the public hearing?
Looks like Jerry wants to.
Jerry.
You need to unmute Jerry.
Alright. Jerry, I'm gonna unmute you so you can, you can speak in.
I'll help you on the second.
Okay, we're gonna take it from, from Eric, Jerry. Okay, thank you so much, guys. Okay, so, um, let's, let's go back a little bit. Um, we were, we're talking about, uh, the merits of, of the application, stating reasons why we're in favor or opposed to the, the proposed variances here. Um, I'd like to, to get the board's, um, input on that in regards to, um, putting it up against the, the criteria for the area variance.
Did I get unmuted? Yep, okay.
You did? Jerry, would you like to make any comments in regards to the, um, the variances here proposed?
I'm actually not seeing, right, um, not really seeing any issues there. The only thing I'm sort of confused about now is there's some of the comments that just got brought up. We, those are just talking about what we're talking about, right?
Yes, you have to, we have to look at the, the merits of the application as it applies to our specific criteria in zoning, zoning only.
Right, the well and all that's, doesn't come-
That is not, that, that is, that is good information, but that does not apply to the actual zoning criteria we are, we are looking at.
But I, I do think, uh, Jerry, if, if you don't mind, Madam Chair,
Mm-hmm.
um, with respect to, uh, consideration number two, that I know that your woman will bring to your attention, um, I do think that it is appropriate for you, Mr. Manning, to consider the extent of the relief that you're being asked to grant, as it relates to the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
That's what I was getting.
Yes, so to, you're, you're 100% accurate to that end with respect to what Ms. Byers and Mr. Kane have indicated. Uh, if to your way of thinking, those, those factors or facts that they've brought to your tip and, and to relate to that consideration, then you should consider those as it relates to, uh, that, that aspect of the criteria for the granting or denial of a variance.
Yeah, we're tru-, we're tru-, they're trying to get to a one acre, which is an R1 criteria, but if, in their engineering studies, if they can make everything come together, I mean, it becomes a non-issue, I believe, right?
Well, the outcome here, in terms of the ultimate end, is, is unknown, because let's work on the assumption that the applicant is thoroughly successful here, urges the title of the lot, and then ultimately finds that they cannot satisfy the state rules, or Mr. Lewis, as it relates to the configuration of the lot relative to well and septic and a building envelope.
Right.
Then, then it, it may end up as, I think, uh, Mr. Smazna was taking us down the path, um, is it possible that ultimately the lot ends up as a vacant lot? That's, that's possible.
That's kind of what, that's what I was trying to say around the bar.
You're right on the mark.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Yeah, and just, just to point back to, and I usually do this, but, um, as, uh, Mr. Kane was saying, it's, the area variance is definitely like the balancing, the balancing act, is what we look at it. So, you know, obviously, the, the benefit achieved by other means, you know, feasible to the applicant, um, undesirable change to the, the neighborhood character, detriment to nearby properties, which we, you know, we've heard some of that, obviously, um, the request being, um, whether or not it's substantial, um, whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects, and whether alleged difficulty is self-created. So those are, those are the, the criteria that we really have to, um, weigh as, as we look at, at these, these variances. So that's, as we look at, um, at this, uh, motion.
It appears that years ago, it appears years ago that the, they actually created the lot before there was zoning, and it doesn't appear self-created to me.
Correct.
Plus, I'm missing something.
Correct.
Hey, Chair.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh, just like Jerry said, those lots were created back in the 60s. I don't, I don't know what kind of zoning was here back then, and that's, that dates back when I was a small person, so. But, uh, my, my concern is right now is, and is about the well and the septic. If we had a drawing or something to see, well, we can't, I don't think, can we go there, or we can't go there?
Not existing yet, is it?
No, there's nothing in there.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Eric.
Just, just, uh, in, uh, one of the things I should remind everyone else is that when we asked Mr. Tewey, uh, last time, if the owner of these lots was paying taxes as they were building lots, he said yes. Nickman's work presented anything differently, and, you know, when you build it, when you put a, have a subdivision map, um, and someone who worked sort of with that kind of thing, um, if, if this wasn't like a drainage field or something like that in the subdivision, and they're trying to change it to a building lot. These were two building lots that, just looking at it, um, objectively, uh, these are two building lots, and someone, uh, had said, "Well, I wanna," they made the decision that it would be, you know, they, it's pretty obvious they couldn't meet the criteria today from the 60s, so they're, they're trying to thread that needle. Whether they'll find water, uh, and whether that lot will, I have no idea what kind of land, you know, soil that is, whether they'll even be able to put a septic on there, uh, is, is an issue that after we make our determination. Is that correct, Bill?
It looks like there's a hand up.
Now, can I see who the hand is? Is that, is that the, Tina, maybe you know, is that the builder?
Rick Cooper? Yeah, I don't believe so. That's, uh, Rick Cooper.
Cooper's for the other project, not this one.
But he's got his hand up right now.
Okay. Um, since public comment is, is complete, um, I'm gonna have to, um, have, um, not allowing to speak at this point. Certainly, if it, um, if it's something that you'd like to, you can obviously put in the Q and A, um, and I can, and I can, uh, look at that as well. I will read that.
Madam Chairwoman, one other thing, just respectfully, as a point of order, with respect to the proposed of the public hearing, I believe you have a motion to second, but I do think that you may have to complete that action with a roll call vote.
Yes, Tina, can you complete the, thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Can you complete the roll call on that? Tina?
Mr. Carter? He's not in. Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smazna?
Yes.
Chairwoman, so it?
Yes, thank you. Okay.
Hold on just a second here.
Tina, do we, um, do we post the meeting minutes, um, for, for zoning online?
Do post them, um, after they're approved. So tomorrow, I will post the last two months meeting, meeting minutes of that.
Okay.
Unless you want to have draft minutes up there and do that.
No, that's okay. Um, uh, Mr. Cooper was asking about, um, about those. Um, but you're right, as a general practice, we wait until they're approved, um, to, to post them. And I know that he was in attendance at, at the last meeting as well, so. Okay, and it, so, anything further from any of the, the board members, um, in regards to this, this application and the merits of this application? Okay. If there is nothing further, um, and we heard from, from Mr. Lewis, which was, which was helpful as well, I would need to get a motion to, uh, approve or disapprove the area variance, um, for this priority, which, um, when combined, if combined, um, it would be 5 Country Club Drive, um, for those two lots. So I would need to get a motion for this, for or against, please.
I'll make the motion to approve it, to create the 5 Country Club Drive, assuming they meet all the other requirements.
Can I get a second?
Madam Chair, I'll give a second. If they, just like, uh, Mr. Manning said, if they can meet the requirements.
Okay.
Should that be a condition or no?
A condition, I assume.
Or it's gonna end up that way anyway, I guess, right?
Correct. Tina, can I get a vote for that, please?
Mr. Carter?
Mr. Carter, we need to hear you. Hold on just a second.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Feller?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smazna?
Yes.
Chairwoman, so it?
Yes. Okay, and we will, um, specifically in the resolution, as we went through, um, the, the different reliefs, we will, um, spell those reliefs out, so they, they are, um, in, in black and white. Okay.
Um, Chairwoman, so if you, if they want to recognize, uh, the applicant's representative, Mr. Tewey, didn't, so that this ends? And he doesn't have his hand up, but I think you have to.
Okay. I see, okay, fine, I'm here. Ah, there we go. Ah, there we go.
All right. Okay. The, thank you very much for the vote. This will be a single-family home, and every one of you is correct that we have to comply with the other rules or regulations that have to do with the placement of septic, well, et cetera, and the neighbors' wells and septic are already there. So one of the reasons that this lot was combined is that we believe that we can do that in the .92 acre lot, whereas it would have been very difficult to do on the two lots. So as a result, five, the number five will only have a single-family home on it.
Okay, excellent. Well, thanks again, Mr. Tui, for joining us. We appreciate that.
Have a pleasant evening, folks.
You too.
You too. Thanks.
Okay, next on the agenda, and we are definitely within the timeframe here, is a public hearing for Suzanne Barg and Lisa Burns. It's an area variance for eight Oakwood Court, 189.19-1-1. It's for the construction of a detached garage. And I'd like to open the public hearing now. I'd like to give the applicant the opportunity first and foremost to speak in regards to this, to give a brief update of that. Let's see, here we go. I'm not sure, I'm gonna give them both access here. And, can you hear us?
Yes. Actually, we're sitting here together on two devices, so we're only gonna speak on one. We recognize the echo issue. So our request for a zoning variance is with regard to the cemetery, the Oakwood Cemetery that adjoins our property. And our objective in constructing this detached garage is to keep it to the rear of our yard without impacting the wetlands that are the rear portion of our property, and as well simultaneously keeping the garage as much as we can in the wooded area that adjoins the cemetery to screen it from our neighbors. We don't want our neighbors to have to look back the structure in our yard. So that has been our objective in coming forward to the zoning board to ask for the area variance to put the garage in the setback for the cemetery. The other threat that we have in the construction of any structure on our property is the developer of Oakwood Court put deed restrictions on all of the lots and stipulated that as the developer, they must also approve of this construction. As we stated at the last meeting, we do have written approval from the developer for the concept of the detached garage, and we shared that with Tina, asking that she share it with the board members. So that is our request before the board is for an area variance related to the cemetery setback.
Hey, excellent. Thank you for the, the description of that. Okay, would anyone from the public like to make a comment at this point? Again, raise your hand, or even in the Q and A at the bottom, certainly put in a comment there as well, and I will read that out loud if, if that's what you desire. Okay, we have a hand here. Christine Cook.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I messed it up the first time. This is actually Jeremy Cook. We're their neighbors, two houses down, at 14 Oakwood Court. We've seen that, Lee and Sue have been working on for the, for the area that they want to put the detached garage on. We're thankful that they've obviously put some thought and effort into where they're putting it. As one of the neighbors that, right down the street, we certainly have no qualms with what they're doing. We appreciate the time and effort they've had to try to hide what they have from public view. There's quite a few trees that are in front of where they would be placing the structure, so it's fairly hidden from Oakwood Court itself. That's all we have.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we got another hand up here, and for Rick Cooper. Okay, Mr. Cooper, I, I'm requesting, oh, there you go.
Let me try again.
The floor is yours.
I have no objection, because I've taken all the neighbors' interest into consideration, and the neighbors on the right have no objection to all of this, they're in the cemetery, and they're keeping a track, well hidden from the trees. And I'm just wondering when that setback was established, just out of curiosity, of 150 feet from the cemetery, and I know that it has been avoided, or, as I say, many times, may be exceptions in other properties in our community, and, basically, that's what I, mm-hmm.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And you can refer to the, the person that was speaking, can refer to section 15413, he is a boy of the code, it was set in effect, Rees 17, 2004, and then there's another section in 18042 under C for cemeteries, but has been in play for a period.
I have a question. It's Warren Cooper. Was that established when the property was sold to the builder?
Yes.
And the other question I would have is, was the former notified about that setback?
The setback is listed on the proposed grant that was submitted. It is dated July 24, 2006.
All I know is when I bought my property from Metro Builders, I never got anything from them for like two years about any deed restrictions, any setbacks, or anything on my property. And I'm just, I don't believe that someone we were made aware of.
This is the middle, middle of the prints that was submitted for lot eight, Oakwood Court, Bear Creek Estates, to Saratoga County, New York, July 24, 2006. And the 150, has the 150-foot setback listed right on then, that this was submitted by the applicant?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. We have one comment in the Q and A, and it's from Pat Cheryl Kelly from five Oakwood Court. Says, we live directly across from Lee and Sue, in particular where garage is going, and we are all for the garage as this proposal is taken into consideration, both neighbors as well as general aesthetics. Thank you so much for your comment. Okay, it looks like Sue would like to speak here, so let me allow her access.
Hi, it's Lee Burns. Just to clarify, we, we have the building lot map, and it was, it's the original lot rent map, and when we were starting to do this, we didn't understand it, that's upon us, and we went to the town and sat down with Mr. Lewis, and he explained it. So we're not disputing the setback, just like a variance, but we're not disputing it. Knowing that it's been there, we didn't understand its full extent. We are very clear on that now.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Think we've addressed all the hands that were raised. Any other, any other comments? All right, not seeing any additional hands raised, or comments, or questions. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Make motion, Madam Chair, let me close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jerry. Can I get a roll, Tina, for that?
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Smazna?
Yes.
Chairwoman Sodek?
Yes, thank you. Okay, again, looking at the area variance language and criteria, we're gonna weigh the merits of the, the application as we deliberate, and just state the reasons why we're in favor or opposed to this, this variance, please. So if anyone would like to speak in regards to that, we appreciate it.
Madam Chair, yes, I would. By looking at the drawing here, if they could move that garage so they could obtain that distance, this, that would meet the requirements.
I agree with what Mr. Lewis was stating, and to be in conformance, if they moved it, then they would, would, you know, bully, their applicant would be applicable, and it could be approved.
Are you saying that, be a little more specific when you say it, so you're saying that if they, they moved the garage, and tell me, like, kind of, what, what direction we're looking at?
If you look at the drawing, where they have it right now, if they move towards the house.
Towards the house.
Towards the house. Away from the cemetery line here, right now, they're only a 20-foot setback.
Okay.
The garage is 55.
Okay, so you're basically saying that if they were to move that garage towards, towards the house, they would not need the requested variance? Is that, is that, am I speaking that correctly?
I think they could, now, having a chair to scale here, I think they could meet that requirement.
Sue does have a question now.
Excuse me. Hey, let's see what we got here. Yeah, Sue's speaker.
Also, I appreciate Mr. Phillips' comments, what is not shown, can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah, I can hear you.
I appreciate Mr. Phillips' comments. What's not shown on the map is where the woods are. There is a, it's, our sketch is not to scale. There is one tree in our backyard. If we were to move this garage closer to the house, that one tree would need to come down, and that area is wide open, and the garage would be visible to everyone in the neighborhood. Part of the reason for putting it as close as we have, if our, we drew this, this is not to scale, this is not done by an engineer, this is us with a pencil on the map. The reason we put it that close to the cemetery line was, again, to screen it from the neighbors. The further you move it to the house, the only tree in the backyard comes down, our beach field is behind the house, we're really trying not to impact that. There's also a shed back there, and if we move the building closer to the house, we then run into challenges in moving the shed. So that, you know, that really is why it is where, why we've put it that close to the cemetery line, was, again, to keep it within the woods and out of the line of sight of the neighbors.
Okay, thank you for the, the.
I will also, you know, just add, we're, we're more than happy to have anyone from the board come out. J.D. Wood did come out before the last meeting, and took a look at the property to see where the woods were, to see what our backyard looked like, so he actually had his firsthand knowledge of the layout of the land and the landscaping that is not shown on the map.
Now, do you, do you have the proposed locations staked out at all?
We, was roughly, we have not had a surveyor come and stake it. This, again, is us, you know, using the one point that is a survey point along the cemetery, and trying to, to our best measuring that, that we could do. Certainly, we would have a surveyor come and, and stake out the building to ensure that we were not closer than our requested 20 feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Yes.
Been with the board for, I don't know, seems like maybe five years. I'm looking at this plan, and I did look at the, with Google Earth, it's real easy to look at people's properties. You know, it's very rare that you have everybody in the community in favor of a project. It's obvious to me that the people within this community are, are trying to, the people that own the house are trying to do the right thing. The people that live on the street are all in favor, and I would say that unless an inhabitant from the people that were asking for the setback raises objection, I, we should move forward.
Any other, any other comments?
I tend to agree with Eric, it's hard, they're doing everything they can to make it their neighborhood as good as they can, so I don't, I don't see where we should stand in the way of that either. The cemetery's never gonna move, and they're not either, so once the building's established, it's out of the way and no one can see it.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. I guess I'm struggling a little bit, because I think it's a fair point about the variance. Obviously, the neighbors and, you know, the character of the neighborhood and everything, you know, everyone's in favor of it, it's in a good spot, but one of the things that I'm kind of trying to balance as I look at this is about the request being substantial. And something that just kind of, I guess, keeps going through my head is just about, you know, that, that variance and whether we can limit the variance at all, maybe there's a Maybe there's a, a middle ground to it where it's, you know, obviously not so visible to the neighbors, but we're not so close, um, to that line. Uh, I guess when I was looking at the sketch, I was assuming it was to scale. So I guess that's a little bit concerning, um... So I guess in my opinion, I'd, I'd like to see something that's drawn to scale. Um, I'd like to, you know, kind of get a better understanding of, okay, where are the, where are the trees? You know, I liked, I liked, um, what was said in regards to, um, you know, the leach fields, the shed, uh, the trees, everything like that. But it's hard to get that, it's hard to get the picture of exactly where that is without seeing, without seeing it actually staked out or drawn to scale. So I guess I'd like to see, um, so a little more specifics on, uh, a map to scale and even pictures of the state area where it would be. Um, I guess how does, how does the board feel about that?
Madam Chair, I, I feel like you do, and they, they could even provide us with a revised drawing with all the dimensions and everything of the layout with the septic, the leach field. And, uh, that would be more representative of what they're trying to do. Uh, and that way there, we could see really where, where this could be moved or not moved. That, that's my feeling of it right now.
Yeah, and, and you know what? I'm not trying to create extra, you know, tons of work for anyone, but I wanna get a better picture of, of what we're approving. I wanna be as specific as we can when we do, um, approve it. So even like a, a picture of, you know, the staked-out areas. I mean, obviously, you haven't had the, um, surveyor come and do that, but even the stakes that you put in, kind of where those are, and then a, a detailed, um, sketch that's drawn to, to scale. Uh, I, I'd like to see both of those before I move forward. It sounds like Pat, Pat does as well. Uh, looks like Sue has some additional information that she, she's willing to share here, so let me, let me bring her up.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, again, Mr. Wood was out here and, and looked at the land. Uh, a couple of things. The fenced area of the Oakwood Cemetery is large. The majority of the grave sites are 1800s. We have not seen a visitor in the 12 years that we have lived here. And they are on the opposite side of the cemetery from where we are constructing this, or where we would like to construct this. Um, to incur the expense of having a surveyor come and stake this out to scale without knowing what the board would, would consider or approve, um, puts an expense on us without knowing that we could move forward with this. Uh, we do not have a site plan with the septic on it that was not ever given to us by the builder. Um, and so one other thing that I'd like to present to the zoning board is we've had an opportunity to drive around town and look at other cemeteries in the community and where homes and structures are located with regard to the cemetery. And specifically, I'd like to ask the board to look at...